It is November 4th, 2019, 4:30. I will open this regular city council meeting of the International Falls City Council. If everyone would please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everybody. The first item we have is roll call. Please note that for the first time since the passing of Mayor Anderson, we have a full city council. Our first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. We have three additions to the agenda. The first would be to consider the mayor's appointment of Michael Klopke to the zoning board of appeals, schedule a city council meeting to consider the zoning board of appeals recommendations, and to discuss times for holding monthly committee of the whole meetings. Council's pleasure with agenda with additions.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deitch. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have the approval of the minutes. The first minutes are from October 21st at the regular city council meeting.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Nelson. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. Question?
Aye.
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 I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we have the minutes of the committee of the whole meeting, which was the planning commission meeting with the project steering team for our comprehensive plan. Chair would entertain a motion to accept.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Nelson. Discussion on the committee of the whole meeting minutes. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we have our accounts payable. The resolution before you is moving funds from the lodging tax of $738.52. And then we have the accounts payable, International Falls regular city council or regular claims, $406,177, I'm sorry, $197.77. Airport commission claims of $93,417.71. No phase-one claims for the airport terminal project. We have claim, phase-two claims of $17,421.44. Runway reconstruction project phase-one claims of $81,617.83. Runway reconstruction project phase-two claims of $4,275. And phase-three reconstruction, runway reconstruction project of $117,264.25. For a total of accounts payable of $720,194 even. Chair would accept a motion to adopt the resolution.
So move.
Councilor Deitch, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Kraus. We have a motion and second. Any discussion on the accounts payable? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we have audience. We will limit the audience to five minutes. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak before the council? Hearing none, we do have an opportunity after, at the end of the meeting as well. We have no public hearing this evening. We have an opening bid of quotes for our, from Shannon's, to remove, upgrade, and replace two furnaces, air conditioners for the Cooching County Senior Center. Background information on this, it, the senior center is owned by the city of International Falls, and the senior center has leased the space to us. Under the policy that we have, the lease that we have, it is their responsibility to update the furnaces and the air conditioners. However, with the financial situation that they've been in, they are not able to do that at this time. There's been some issues with the heating in the past, and as we're going into winter, if we don't get this fixed, our building may or may not be with heat. And so, that's where we're at on this particular subject. Is there anything that you'd like to add, city administrator?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council. Typically, when we seek contractor quotes or professional services, we like to get at least more than one quote. We reached out to a local plumber who is actually out of state for a period of time, so we don't have a second quote for this particular work. And with it on the agenda, it's been made public, but we can seek other quotes if the council wishes, or if you choose to move forward and try and do this work right away, I guess we can, we'll need to do that. So, we did try and reach out for another quote, though.
Okay.
Excuse me, sorry.
Yes.
And Tony from Tony Comfort Systems, or, I can't speak about any business, but, Tony Comfort Systems, and he do a bit, he's very good.
I, I.
Very reasonable.
Commissioner Brokaw, can you tell me why we, or how we went about securing the quote?
Well, it was a little quicker than I thought. I didn't realize we were replacing them, so I got a budgetary number from Shannon's, and then when I phoned out who was on the agenda, I tried to get a second quote.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
With all due respect to Ms. Trumpeter-Ogerson, we cannot answer questions in these portions of the meetings.
Fair enough. So, if we, so then, this is before us right now to, to upgrade the senior citizen center and fix the furnaces, air conditioners. Do we have a budget that that can come out of?
Yes.
So, question is before us.
Mr. Mayor, I do have, not necessarily on the quote, but we do allocate a certain amount of budget to the senior center as part of a contract.
Mm-hmm.
Although, their contract clearly states that it is their responsibility to upkeep these furnaces. I, my question is, moving forward, do we continue to not only spend, it's my understa, it's about $2,000 a year we pay?
Two.
That sounds correct. That's, so, $15,000 is almost, what would that be? That'd be eight years' worth? So are we going to allocate an additional $2,000 next year and do the furnaces? Which I'm okay with, I'm just asking.
Mm-hmm. Well, those would be the questions that we're having.
So, because it is in the contract that they, it is their, it is the senior citizen's center's responsibility to upkeep these furnaces. And this is eight years' worth of allocations. I'm just making that known.
Why?
Please.
We cannot.
I'm sorry.
Mayor?
Yes.
Has advertisement for bids been posted through the local media? Newspaper?
No, they have not.
Okay. I would say it should be opened up to the public again.
Okay.
Let's see another bid also.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
Just some additional information for the council. Typically, the legislature sets a standard, and so they, I think effective in 2019, they changed the law where it was required to get sealed competitive bids for all work over $100,000. Previously, they increased that, I believe it was effective in 2019, to $175,000. But, the League of Minnesota Cities, and I would concur with this, advises that it's always good practice to get competitive quotes, so that with property tax dollars, that we're making sure that we're getting the best value out of our property tax dollar that we can. So at least getting two quotes is always a good practice. And I was just pointing out, in this particular case, we weren't able to obtain a second quote. It's not absolutely required until you go over, I believe the number is $50,000, but I'd have to verify the statute.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
How was it, how was it advertised, that we were seeking bids?
We just made individual contact with contractors that we knew were licensed to do this kind of work.
And Shannon's is the only?
Shannon was the one that we contacted at first, when we found out that it wasn't just trying to get a number, as Ted pointed out, for budgetary purposes, it was actually to do the work. I think there was just some miscommunication internally. Then he reached out to another local contractor to try and get a quote, but that individual's out of town, actually out of state, and wasn't able to respond within the timeframe that we had. So, we just contacted him towards the middle of today, end of last week.
And if you guys remember, at the committee of the whole meeting that we had a while back, this was one of the issues that came up, that we needed to fix this before winter. So, at that point, when, when the quote came in, I had been contacted by multiple people over at the senior citizen center, based on the fact that their heat is not working. So when the quote came in, we, we put it on the agenda so that we can try to get this moved faster than, depending on when, when we start getting cold weather, so we can get the, the situation fixed on our building. So, please.
I guess I still would like to see this advertised and brought up to the next meeting next month, or two weeks from now. Probably have to be next month before we get everything in. Just to be fair to the other businesses in our locale.
Okay. Is that a motion to seek additional bids?
I'll make that motion to seek additional bids.
Okay. We have a motion to seek additional bids by Councilor Deitch. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Any discussion on that? Yes.
So we would book to make a decision on the 18th, so we can get this taken care of, because their heat's not on, we need to.
Well, I believe they have heat on, I don't believe that it's running. Please.
So, the, what is that, a heat issue, first thing? The two furnaces are old enough, they don't make parts work anymore. So, started this conversation about five years ago, we wanted to do something, so that we're not sitting in the middle of March, when the furnace, when one or two of the furnaces die, that we actually can control what we're putting in there, rather than having to put something in there in a hurry. So it's, it's not that they're having heat issues, it's these furnaces about that they're like, we need to replace them. So it's, it's not, the heat is working, it's just if a major component fails on one of those furnaces, they don't make the parts anymore.
Fair enough. Okay. So we have a motion and second to seek additional bids. Any other discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we would, Chair would accept a motion to remove from the table the appointment of the mayor pro tem.
I'll move to remove it from the table.
Okay, thank you.
I want to put it there.
Okay, so we have a motion to remove from the table, from Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilor Deitch. So the motion and second is to remove the appointment of the mayor pro tem from the table. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. So now we have the appointment of the mayor pro tem before us. Is there anyone on the council that is interested in serving as mayor pro tem? Someone has to do it.
Mayor?
Yes.
I was just going to make the comment that I volunteered, Councilor Buller, when his, in his absence, but nobody seemed to really jump on that last time, so they gave it.
Dude, yeah. It was this close, buddy. They nominate Joey.
We have a nomination of Joey Kraus as the mayor pro tem. Do you accept?
I accept.
Okay. We have a motion for Councilor Kraus to be mayor pro tem. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Councilor Deitch. Is there any other, anybody else that, any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, question?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm standing.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes, for, for the motion, and one abstention.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to, oh, and now you are officially the budget and finance chair, too.
Yeah, thanks.
Boom, that just happened.
Oh, yeah, thank you. Really appreciate it.
Next, we'll go to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, any of these items may be pulled from the consent agenda. Remember, there is no discussion on the consent agenda after, we have a motion and second. The first would be to approve the 2020 licenses as presented, which you guys all have in your packets. And the second one would be to approve patrol officer Kalen Schneider's separation from employment, effective October 24th, 2019. The, approve the travel and training expenses for the two firefighters to attend the National Fire Academy incident, safety officers class in Maple Grove, and approve Amanda Stephan to serve as the City Beach camp host for the 2020 season. This would be her third year. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So move.
We have a motion to accept the consent agenda by Councilor Deitch. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second by Councilor Kraus. Question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Consent agenda passes unanimously. Next, we'll get into the new business. First item we have is a request of, for the approval of the 2019, year 2019 license and year 2020 license renewals that may include tobacco or liquor as presented. The items that we have on here today are Citizens for Bacchus AB, a restaurant license, a wine on-sale license, 3-2 on-sale restaurant and bar license. Next is DG Retail LLC, store 15619, General Dollar Store, which is a cigarette license, and Randy's Tire and Auto Repair LLC, cigarette license and gasoline pump license. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the licenses.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Nelson. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
No issues. Thank you.
Excellent choice. Any other discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we have the resolution to, for a permit of a one-to-four day temporary on-sale liquor license for Cooching Aging Options, December 6th, at Bacchus Community Center for their annual logging camp Christmas.
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution approving the state of Minnesota joint powers agreement with the city of International Falls on behalf of its city attorney and police department and authorized signatures. It's a two-part, two-part resolution, there's two things in here, and who wants to discuss that? It's like one of you two, I bet.
Well, it's just standard agreements that we've used for a number of years, and we would urge the council to approve those.
All right.
Let's just do our job efficiently.
So the first one would be the Minnesota joint powers agreement authorizing, authorized agency, SWIFT Contract 166074 MN036011A. Please.
Just for your information, as the city attorney pointed out, we have adopted this in past years, and there's a resolution that's in a form that's acceptable to the state of Minnesota. And the request is for the city council to adopt the resolution, and by adopting the resolution, it authorizes yourself and me to sign both agreements and to move forward and, and appoint Rich Mastin as the designee for the one agreement, and then the city attorney for the secondary agreement. And again, both agreements just allow us access to the state computer system, data records, and lays out the manner for us to try and be engaged in that activity. It is more efficient for police and court systems. And there is a, a one-page sheet at the end of it that identifies the fees for this particular work, and, and it depends on the nature of the work as to what the fee is, but it's $50 a month, so it's relatively inexpensive. And so the adoption of the resolution would approve, moving forward with both agreements, and authorize me and you to sign the agreements.
Okay. So, I would accept a motion to adopt the resolution.
So move.
We have a motion by Councilor Nelson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Deitch. Any discussion? Hearing none, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next is to approve the renewal of the Paul Bunyan Drug Task Force Inter-Agency Agreement and authorized signatures.
So move.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Buller. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Kraus. Chief, how's the, how's everything working with the drug task force? We've been in that for a couple of years now.
We've finished up our second year this year, Mr. Mayor. It's been doing very well. We've had a lot of success, been some, there's been some big cases, some good investigations, so I think it's been worth.
Okay. Well, thank you. Any other discussion?
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to add, just in recognition of our police department, you know, there's been a number of agencies that were involved prior to the city of International Falls, police department being engaged in the Paul Bunyan Drug Task Force. And as the chief indicated, we've had a great deal of success, and when we look at activity relative to some of the other jurisdictions, I think we're kind of ahead of that curve. And it, and it's a credit to the police department and the people that we have working on the drug task forces, as well as the coordination with the other jurisdictions that's really led to that success. So I think it's been a worthwhile pursuit on the part of the city, and again, that's one of the five objectives, I think, that the council had laid out in March of this year, was, is moving forward with drug enforcement issues. So, we'd encourage the council to move forward with this agreement.
Well, thank you. Any other discussion that we have? Hearing none, question? Question?
So move.
Question?
Aye, I'm sorry. Sleeping on the log.
Oh, yes. All right. Next, we have to approve the police chief's recommendation to hire a part-time patrol officer, Dustin Hegelson, is that correct?
Helgason.
Helgason, to a full-time patrol officer vacancy effective November 18th, 2019.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Buller. We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Question?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'll vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we have a council discussion on representatives to organizations with the joint power agreement, with joint powers agreements. This actually started having the conversation at a rec board meeting, and we, I brought it up in just my mayor's report in the last city council meeting, but I, I wanted to formally write my thoughts into, onto paper, so you guys could see where I'm coming from and what, what I'd like to do. Ultimately, I see we have a younger group of people in our community that want to become active, but it's very difficult, the more young people that we have, to balance between employment and family and all of the city meetings. Before 2005, the city council consisted of eight city councilors and the mayor. That's when KITA and the Recreation Commission and the Falls Airport Commission had all of their joint powers agreements were already written before that. So at the time, city councilors would serve on one or two external committees, one or two internal committees, plus their regular city council meetings and anything else. Well now, just moving forward where we're at in history, now we have additional advisory committees, ad hoc committees, task forces, International Falls EDA commit, committee meetings. Plus, we're trying to still get in the airport and all of these other ones, where we have mandatory amount of people that we have to put from this board onto these other joint powers agreements. Specifically, the KITA, which is, was formed by special legislation, it, it states that we have to have two city councilors serve on that and two county board members. The airport commission says that we have to have two city councilors and two county commissioners. And the recreation commissioners, we have recreation commission, we have to have three city councilors and two school board members, which is weird in itself, because then we immediately have a quorum at every rec board meeting, which, the way that we, we post it is fine, but at the time, the school board had less members, so they had less members that were on the board. Well now, they have more members than we do. We have less, and we have more, more representation. So, it's my belief that these boards and commissions require liaison from this board, because we have financial repercussions, financial implications that need to be looked at. But I also think that we can find quality, qualified citizens to appoint to these boards and commissions. This would be, allow our community to become more engaged. It also gives the opportunity to have the best and most qualified boards. And in my, in my letter, I, I made a joke of it, but I think there's a lot of truth to it. Just because you got elected doesn't mean that you know how to run an airport. I would request that we draft a letter to KITA, the International Falls Airport Commission, and the Falls Recreation Commission requesting bylaw changes, and these change, changes would allow the organizations to not be limited to allowing only elected officials to serve, and allowing the parent organizations to appoint qualified applicants. I realize this is a lot, but I just really think as we move forward in our community, if we're gonna really start to make some strong boards, strong commissions, and strong ties to our community, we have to have the best people on these boards. So, my request would be to have a letter drafted to those organizations requesting bylaw changes. This board's thoughts on that, and I would also accept a motion if you're interested.
We would still maintain one individual on each one, for sure, right?
Absolutely.
Can I request which ones I want to get off of?
No, all of them.
No, but, I, I mean, we can have a frank discussion about this. It's, if, if the board doesn't see that this is something that we're interested in, this is something that I've, that, that I came up with on my own, but I also know that just because I'm the mayor doesn't mean that I can push an agenda. I want to have the conversation with the city council, see how you feel on it. I want to have the conversation with the city council, see how you feel on it. And I'd also want you guys, if you have something that you'd like to bring to the council that we can have a discussion on, please bring that forward so that we can decide where we want to go as a community.
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
So I guess my question would be, for example, the Recreation Commission?
Yes.
Appoints four at-large members that are community members already. So it's made up of the four at-large?
Yep.
The two school board and the three city council members. Are you asking for the city council to retain the ability to appoint three individuals, but not necessarily councilors? Or are you asking, because the way it's worded, you're asking them to, it would essentially create more at-large on the committee?
I am requesting these boards have conversations on what that looks like.
Okay.
I would like to be able to have whoever sits in this seat as mayor be able to appoint one member of our board and other people qualified in the community. I don't know what the rec commission's thoughts are on that, if they want to change the bylaws to the city council has one person and they appoint four and the school board appoints one and then they appoint three more, or what that looks like. Right now, I'd just like to have it go back to the organizations and have the conversation about, about what they're looking, what bylaw changes make sense. Because especially with KITA, I would love to see that changed. It was one of the things that came out in the Newmark study, that we should have more people in our community be part of that. However, I understand the sensitivity of it because it is special legislation that wrote those bylaws. So there's some things we're gonna be able to do, there's some things we're not gonna be able to do, but I think that it's a good point to start the conversation with these other boards that we're part of, that we're partners with, that either A, we want to see a change, or B, we don't want to see a change. But that's what this board discusses. Please.
Mr. Mayor, and I'm okay with the change. I just, I look at especially the airport?
Mm-hmm.
And I look at especially the rec commission. The taxpayers of the City of International Falls have a lot of skin in the game.
Mm-hmm.
So I want to make sure that we maintain some representation of our, since we are paying?
Absolutely.
A very large portion of our budget goes to those two specifically, especially the airport. I just want to make sure that we're not going to push us right off of the ability to help
No.
steer those committees, if you will.
And I appreciate those thoughts because I don't see us having no responsibility on the board or putting nobody on those. And it, depending on how they look at it, we could still appoint three city councilors to the rec commission. We could still appoint two people to KITA. It's still, I mean, we have no responsibility to put an elected official on the North Cooch Sanitary District, but yet we have members of this board that sit on the North Cooch Sanitary District. So it's still, it still sits on this seat of who is going to be on those boards.
Right. And as long as it's clear that we still have the ability to appoint, it's just a matter of whom we can appoint.
Right.
Elected official versus citizen.
Mm-hmm.
I just want to make sure that that's clear because I feel it's very important that we, as a council, have the ability to appoint representation to represent our best interests as the elected officials for the citizens of the City of International Falls. I feel very strongly that we still have that ability. But as far as whom that is, I'm okay with it being an elected official or an interested, passionate citizen that would like to help make these committees better. So that's, that was my only, that's my only clarification slash concern.
Okay. So, please.
Mr. Mayor, with regards to KITA, if the membership of that board was created by special legislation, in all likelihood, they're not going to be able to change it internally. They would, if they decide that's what they want to do, they'd need to probably have Mr. Eklund?
Isn't it great he's in the room?
Put forward some special legislation.
Isn't that great that that's in the room, or that he's in the room?
That, that.
That's not what I-
See how he feels about you, Rob?
So, so the chair would entertain a motion to draft those letters if you guys are interested, or if this board is interested.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilor Deach. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second from Councilor Nelson. Discussion on the motion. See, we just do all the discussion before. That's not okay. All right. So we have a motion and second to have a letter drafted to the Coochin Economic Development Authority, the International Falls Coochin Airport Commission Board and the International Falls Recreation Commission requesting bylaw changes. If there's no other discussion, question?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. Next, we have some new stuff that got put on the agenda today. I would like to appoint Michael Klopke to the vacancy on the zoning board of appeals with the term expiring December 31st, 2019, to fill Jerry Franzen's spot after he resigned.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler.
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, question?
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries, five zero. Next item on the agenda is to schedule a special meeting to consider zoning board of appeals recommendations. If you guys, I know you guys did because everyone's commented a little bit about my mayor's report. There is a piece on there that was from October 31st. On October 31st, I invited KITA Director Paul Nevenin, Administrator Ken Anderson and Building Official Kelly Myers to join me on a conference call with the I-Falls Group LLC, developers of the Best Western project on Highway 53 and Memorial Drive. They stated they have had some setbacks in the past months regarding the FAA height restrictions near airports, which was heightened due to the runway project in International Falls. During the conversation, we discussed the current state of the property where the hotel is to be built. They have a request for Pleasant Avenue to be improved from a dirt road to a bituminous surfacing. They also are requesting Minnesota Power remove or bury power lines across their access point on Memorial Drive. And finally, they requested work to be done with the Department of Transportation to allow a gentle turnoff of Highway 53 to Memorial Drive. I informed them that the city is committed to the, to address these issues moving forward. On Friday, November 1st, after my mayor's report went out, the City of International Falls received the building plans for the 83-room Best Western with restaurant, lounge, meeting room, fitness center, pool, facility and bocce ball court. From Lukicik Architecture on behalf of the developers, they are seeking a building permit for immediate groundbreaking to meet their fall 2020 opening. However, as discussed on our phone conversation, the developers must have a variance because the city ordinance states buildings cannot be over 35 foot in height. The plans show for a 55-foot height and must be brought before the zoning board of appeals. Kelly Myers has set a meeting date for November 19th at 5:30 PM. That date was based on the timeframes for the public hearing on the variance. The publication will be printed on the journal on November 6th. First, I want to thank the developers for their investment to the future of International Falls. I want to thank the late Mayor Bob Anderson, Paul Nevenin, Ken Anderson and Kelly Myers and all the personnel behind the scenes that put in hours and hours on projects that may or may not see the light of day. Economic development is not as simple as SimCity makes it look. The KITA office is working 10 to 15 projects on any given day. In a world of non-disclosure agreements, and I don't want people to know what I'm doing, it's hard to make the office looks like it's doing things, but they are. They're building relationships for potential growth. International Falls is investing in its future and the business community is investing in themselves and we're started the process of moving forward. There are always going to be some setbacks, but we will overcome them, just like this height variance. The Planning Commission will hold a meeting on November 19th at 5:30 PM during the great Minnesota holiday of deer season. I will be calling members of the commission to get a quorum to make the decision on the height variance. That meeting should last no more than an hour. Therefore, at this time, as mayor of International Falls, I will call a special city council meeting on November 19th at 6:30 to accept the variance or send their findings back to the developers. So at this time, I would like to set a city council meeting for 6:30 PM on November 19th. And if the members of this board are interested to watch the proceedings at 5:30, we will make sure that we have a notice that shows that we may have a quorum of the city council at that particular meeting. This is, I have, I have this, this will be in the journal this week. This is a copy of the, what the hotel's gonna look like. It's 83 rooms, we have the plans and they're ready to break ground. I find this to be the most exciting thing that we've had come through our community in a long time. This isn't maybe. They have the plans in the city and they're filing for their permits. So in addition to some of the other big things that we have going on, which is the Knights Inn is getting a facelift, I'm sure you guys have seen all the work that's going on over there and they're investing in our community from right across the river. Our Highway 53 project next year, which is going to complement these guys fantastically because the work should be getting done roughly at the same time. Our five-year CIP that we just approved, we have a lot of really good things in our community and we're only going to move forward from here. So I'm very, very excited for that and I did ask Representative Eklund to come to tonight's meeting to kind of hear what we have going on in the community because sometimes we have to show off that we are doing some good things. So thank you, Representative Eklund, for coming this evening. We, we don't need a motion for, for the special city council meeting, do we?
No, you can set that.
Yeah, I totally did.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Next, we have the last item on the agenda, which is to discuss committee of the whole meetings. Historically, we have had committee of the whole meeting scheduled for the second Monday of every month at 2 o'clock. I don't ever really remember having one. I would really like to schedule meetings so we can get through a lot of stuff. I think we're all well aware that we have things that need to get accomplished in the city. There's reasons that we have not had meetings. We have a new city council. I would like to have committee of the whole meetings, but I also don't want to necessarily use the schedule that we've had because we have a whole new city council at this point. So to be fair to all the members of this committee, when do committee of the whole meetings make the most sense for this board? Anybody that's open for discussion?
I'll be honest, 2 o'clock is tough.
Okay. And if we have to do it later, we can do, I would think if we really get into work, like the first couple of times that we have some committee meetings, they may be long, but after that, if we get into a rhythm of what's being done and where we're at, we can get through them a lot faster. I don't want to have, in the beginning, I don't mind if we have a couple of long meetings, but I'd really like to get to the point where we have an hour meeting and stuff gets kicked back to our committee meetings. So one or two people can handle a lot of stuff and then they bring that back to the committee of the whole. So we're all knowledgeable on what's going on in the city. That would be how I would like to see things happen, but I am, International Falls is a weak mayor position. I have one vote as all you guys do, so all I'm doing is trying to be a go-between so we can get the most accomplished in the shortest amount of time. So-
What's your definition of long?
Six hours?
That's long.
I was just teasing. I would say two hours in the beginning, just to try to get, get through some stuff. And I can meet in the evenings, I can meet most days afternoon, but to be fair to our other councilors, what, what time works for you guys?
I personally work from home, but anywhere up until about 3:00 or 4:00 is really tough. It's not, it's not, completely not doable. Mondays, I noticed we have kind of the pattern for Mondays. Mondays are more of a flood of phone calls, but I can definitely make Mondays work, but I'm, most likely would have to be 3:30, 4:00 at the earliest.
I'm in that boat.
Okay.
Okay, and I'm, I'm fine with later in the day. Does that work for you two?
I'm pretty-
Okay?
Pretty busy, but I'll make it work.
Says the retired guy.
So what, what days of the week? If Monday seems to be a busy day for you, what day of the week works best?
So that's a really interesting question. Wednesdays, I'm typically in court and Tuesdays or Thursdays, I'm out.
Okay.
So, I have like no free time. Mondays are fine as long as it's closer, I'm closer to 4:00 would work for me. I don't know, I don't want to take up everyone's evening.
Yeah.
But I can get out an hour early. That's not hard.
Okay, Monday's at 4:00 moving forward. And then the only thing is, is the next one would be on a Tuesday because in November we have a holiday next Monday. So does next Tuesday work?
I have to be honest, I'm on vacation next week, you know why? So.
What's the date next Tuesday?
12. So I will not be in town, I'll be a check.
Tuesday's the 12th, Monday's the 11th.
And what time would this be at?
We can set that right now. If we do Mondays after, if we do Mondays after November, that's fine by me. But if we want to do Tuesday, what time works for you next Tuesday?
The later the better. I have two morning hearings in Roseville County.
Okay. So 5:00?
Yep.
Okay. Does 5:00 work for you next Tuesday?
Works for me.
5:00 next. And Joe, we don't care.
Heard that.
So our next committee of the whole meeting will be next Tuesday at 5:00 PM and after that, second Monday of the month, at what time works? 4:00 or 5:00?
Either or.
Okay.
We could maybe start at 4:00 and then once we get it to where we're doing-
Okay, let's start at 4:00 after that.
Right, and once we get to where we're having shorter meetings, maybe if we could move it to-
A little bit later?
That would be-
Sounds like a winner.
Anything, in my opinion.
Okay, so the, the plan is right now, next month, or next Tuesday, we'll have a 5:00 PM committee of the whole. And then after that, the second, the second Monday of the month, we'll have a 4:00 PM meeting and then we'll reassess come, come January when we do our, our first meeting of the year and we'll set our meeting dates.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
As long as we're talking about meetings, we're gonna have to have some budget and finance committee meetings here at some point?
Yeah, you're the budget and finance chair.
Administrator Anderson, how many meetings would you propose? We do have to finalize the budget before-
There's a truth in taxation hearing, or a public input meeting is what it's also known as, at, on December 2nd, and that's at 6:00 PM and it can't be before 6:00 PM by statute. So we have that meeting at 6:00 on Monday, December 2nd. It's actually a busy day because at 4:30, we have a regular city council meeting and then we're also having a, at, at or about 6:30 PM, we were gonna do a final review of the comp plan based on, or actually, there's a public hearing that the Planning Commission's holding at that time and I think it would be appropriate for the council to be there as well. So that'll be a busy day. But typically, what we would do is take public input on December 2nd and then the final approval would be two weeks later at the regular meeting on December 16th. And in the interim, we make any revisions that the council would want to make. And in the interim, we make any revisions that the council would want to make based on public input. In the past, we haven't had a lot. So if there's changes that the council feels it wants to make to our preliminary budget that we adopted before the end of September, then we should meet one or two times, depending on how many things need to be revised and considered.
So we could hijack the meeting on the 9th and open with a budget and finance committee meeting, and then just move into a committee of the whole meeting?
Could.
Correct?
Yep.
I mean, would that make sense? We would just have to put out a notice that we'll meet that day and have that meeting prior, or that'll be the first part?
Yep.
And as soon as we close that meeting, we'll open the committee of the whole meeting?
Sounds like a winner.
Okay. That works for me. I just wanted to make sure it was covered because.
All right. So just for setting our committee of the whole meetings, we don't need to have a motion. We're good, right?
Well, Mayor, you can set any meeting that you want, special meeting. So, excuse me, it would be appropriate to make sure we can have a quorum all the time, which we've had exhaustive discussion about that. So I think we're fine going forward with the second Monday of the month.
Okay.
At the 4:00 timeframe that you approve.
Okay, sounds good. We're going to do that then. All right. Any other business to come before the council? All right. Go to the boards, committees, department heads. Administrator Anderson.
Just very briefly, Mayor, I had sent in front of you a news release that came in on Friday, I believe it was, from Voyagers National Park about additional aquatic invasive species. There's a Chinese mystery snail that's been confirmed in the park, and so the public is just encouraged to clean, wash, and dry their boats and other watercraft to make sure that we don't continue to spread these invasive species. It's, it seems like we get a new and different species here every now and then, and this one, there's really at present no viable management options, according to the Voyagers National Park, to eradicate the species once they're established. So it's just for public information and the council, and I don't have any additional information to share with the council at this point in time.
Okay. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, council, I have nothing special to report.
Okay. Department heads? Oh, they all left.
Smart.
Reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Okay. I have two things really quick. I did meet with Paul Nevinen, Tricia Hyble, and Pam Olvison with Woodmott Company. They represent the Kmart building. We had very good conversations. They're very knowledgeable. They spent a lot of time in Fort Francis, finding out what the Canadians are doing with their shopping habits, and they are very committed to this project over here. They operate multiple, multiple Kmart buildings across the country, and they've been switching them from one tenant to what they're looking at doing here possibly is breaking it up into four or five different suites. They have received interest already on some of the suites. So with that being said, I have no other information at this time, but they are a very knowledgeable, smart group, and I'm very happy that they're the ones that we're working with moving forward. And the last piece is, I'm really happy we're moving forward with our public works, CIP, and the 53 project. We've had a lot of discussions in the last couple of weeks on the long-term needs, and the senior center was one of them. And I did have a conversation with Rotary President Ashley Hall about the Splash Park. They are open to moving it from city beach if we're interested in moving it somewhere else. So then, my question is, if we were to move it in the city of International Falls, where would we put it? So we have questions with the Splash Park, the senior center, the aging of Cary Park Arena. We just have a lot of stuff that we have to address, and that's one of the reasons I want to have some committee of the whole meetings, so we can look at long-term visioning on what we can do to move some of these things forward. And then the last one is, I'm just wondering, have we done anything with the voluntary annexation? Have we gotten any information from the county to get that going yet?
Well, Mayor, I've been working with the city attorney, and as we represented at a previous meeting, I forwarded an application to the state municipal boundaries board, and they rejected the application because the legals reference Platts, which they need copies of the Platts to be able to verify it. They actually make a referral to MINDOT. So that was one of the other requirements. And then the city attorney pointed out that the, one of the conditions is that the property has to be contiguous to the existing city, and the maps that existed at the county showed that the Donahue property was not contiguous to Bob Peterson or the property adjacent to them in the city. And so we've got that mapping corrected, but the information still has to be submitted to the, or back to the Department of, or Municipal Boundaries Unit. So that hasn't been done, but we have to do that.
Is there anything that we need to do as a council to move that forward?
I don't think it requires any more council approval. The city attorney and I have to coordinate on the legal descriptions to make sure that they're all reconciled or they tie out, and that any references to the Platts, that we provide full and complete copies of the Platts maps to the state. I believe those are the only things that they required in addition to that, so.
Okay.
I'll put that on the front burner for he and I to meet and try and get that finished up.
Okay. Anything else on council committees, boards, or commissions? All right, seeing nothing, then we will go to audience. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to bring something forward? Hearing none. We will have our next regular city council meeting on November 18 at 4:30 PM. This meeting is adjourned.